Please call to order the Policy Subcommittee and Committee the whole meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Nicholson?
Present.
Member Ford?
Present.
Member Sandoval?
Present.
Member Castellano?
Absent.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Mayor McGee?
Absent.
Thank you. So on the agenda this evening, we have the LVTI admissions policy. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Tutwiler to sit at the table for the discussion.
Glad to. And here to present is Mr. Fred Gallo, Director at Lynn Tech, who has put together, we think, a really solid proposal for an updated and evolved admissions policy for Lynn Tech. I would say probably, most notably over the past three years, there's been a statewide conversation about vocational school admissions policies. For, I don't know how long, many years, all of the vocational schools in the state have had the exact same boilerplate admissions policy and criteria. And, you know, the thrust of the conversation in recent years has been really around, you know, is this policy, are these policies or is this policy equitable? Are there students who get left out and who don't have access to what are, right now, really, really popular schools across the state? With, I don't think there's a vocational school that doesn't have a waitlist across the state. And so that prompted all schools by state decree to have some more flexibility around developing a new admissions policy. There are some obligatory pieces that have to be there, and Mr. Gallo will talk through that. But what they've crafted collaboratively with experts from their own team within the school, but also staff from Special Ed Department and English Learner Education, is a process and criteria, a framework for admissions that is far more equitable, in our view, and very aligned to our core values in the Lynn public schools. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Gallo to walk us through.
And again, I thank you, because I know this is a special meeting held for this, and we are coming to the end of the year, so I do appreciate the time. And I also, I do want to thank my committee, because I work with some great people. They are on the front of here of the policy. A lot of hard work went in and, you know, real commitment to making this policy what it is. So I've got a quick slideshow. Pretty much, the purpose is, and Dr. Tutwiler explains, you know, really, the why this has become kind of like, let's do it now. But the purpose of this, it's, we're redesigning the policy. And the reason why we're doing it the way we are is so that it's more equitable, so that we do address the district's commitments, the values of the school and the district in developing this policy. The old policy was good for what it was, but it has not been updated for, I believe it's 14 years now. And it serves its purpose, because I think it helped bring Lynn Tech to where we are now, where there's such a desire to come to Lynn Tech, that where a lot of students are being left out, and what we believe is very deserving students are being left out. So we looked at values, which is the first thing we did in this policy. We all know the district values, you know, they've been discussed many times. But when we looked at Lynn Tech specifically, what are we looking in the Lynn Tech student? What is that ideal student for us? And that's, you know, a student that shows respect, has a strong work ethic, has passion. We have a great Skills USA program to develop their leadership. Being involved, having responsibility, personal responsibility, integrity, being a productive member of the community with our many community service projects, and interests which I bolded there. And there's a reason I bolded that, because that's really one of the big changes we made in this policy, to distinguish how we're going to admit students, is that interest portion, which we believe was missing from the previous policy. So our commitments are to equity. We want something that's equitable. We also want something where we provide that high-quality technical education to our students. That is what we want to do. And the reason we do that is we want to provide our students with choices. We want them graduating so that they can either, day one, get these industry-rated credentials, get good employment, straight out of high school, or if they want to prepare for college, they can do that, military, apprenticeships, so they have choices. And that's what we're looking for here. So one of the things we did, you know, we need certain criteria to determine admissions. So we did look, and I'm actually going to compare it to what we had before. So we kept some of the same criteria, but we changed really how we're measuring this. So academic grades, and what we did is we tied it to what our values were. You know, academic grades show that work ethic, that passion, that involvement, that responsibility. While the attendance record, you know, whether a student that's there is involved, a student shows personal responsibility, caring for the community. Discipline record shows respect, leadership, responsibility, integrity, communities, these are all parts of our, of our core values as a school. And then the interview with the attention to a student artifact, I'm going to go into what that means in a minute, shows really their passion and interest for what we have to offer. So this, it's, there's a lot of information on it, but I want to kind of go through, because this is really where we talk about where the real changes occur. So if you look at academic grades, if you remember the former policy, it was 32% of our grading was academic grades. As's were worth a certain number of points, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs were worth points. So we're lowering that from 32% to 20% of their total score. Now, the big thing we've done is when we looked at what's important for Lynn Tech student, we were looking to say, like, we call it, you know, that average student, that C student who tries hard but can't quite do it? Are they any less valuable to us than that student that gets As? And the answer is really no, because a lot of times, this average student can be very successful with us. So what we did is we flattened the score, where if you get anywhere from A to C, you get the same score. But we did feel we needed some differentiation. What we've noticed in the middle schools is, you know, that kid that tries hard is probably going to be up in the C range. If you're really not trying, you're getting Ds and Fs, so that's where that score comes down, for the Ds and Fs. So a straight C student's going to get that same score as a straight A student. In each English, Math, Science, and Social Studies, each course is rated according, and the scale is in that policy. The attendance record, used to be 25, we moved that down to 20. And we just had picked, and I was part of the old policy years ago, and we just picked numbers out of the sky, well, four of this. So what we did is we used chronically absent. The only difference is chronically absent, by the definition of Massachusetts, is any absence. The state requires to only use unexcused absences. So we use the same number, but of unexcused absences. So it goes from, and 18 being, you pretty much, was all your score if you're chronically absent, down to, and then we kind of tiered it from there. Actually, I missed something, which I probably should have said, which is, let me finish this, and I'll go back to that. Discipline record, this is a change in really the mandate from the state, where we used to be able to use any type of suspension. Now, it's only disciplinary fractions tied to the 37A, H and 1/2, H and 3/4. So if a student gets suspended for being off-campus, that's not a 37A, so we cannot count those against them. So these are the real serious offenses. So that's pretty much, we said, if you have one of these serious offenses, you're going to lose a lot of scores. So that kid who, you know, goes out with his friends and skips school for a day and gets suspended, that's not going to affect them. And that's, again, something that came from the state. Now, the big thing we did, the interview was formerly 10%. It was almost a checkbox, yes, no. Most of the kids, most of the students got eight, 10 points on that. So it really didn't make a difference. So what we're doing is, we are increasing that score significantly. The second thing we're doing, we wanted the students to be more involved in their application process, because right now, it's passive. Student fills out the name information, turns it in, everything happens on the other side. The schools give us the attendance record, give us everything, student has no involvement. So we wanted to give them an involvement. So what we did is, we require an artifact. Now, we are not scoring the artifact. And an example I can give is, we had Nubie Rato on, who's one of our radio TV broadcasting. So a student has this big production for, you know, TV production that he's showing and sends out as, it is their artifact. Then you have the one that may puts a camera front, and is like, I really want to be a, you know, just speaks into, I want to be a carpenter, because I just love building houses and stuff. We're not going to look at the production value of one and judge that more than the other. We're actually not, this is a, I did it or not. The scoring of this comes in your description of why that represents you and why that represents you in Lynn Tech. So that student who's talking about, you know, they just want to be a carpenter, because, you know, my dad's a carpenter, and I've always dreamed of following their footsteps, you know, those are the type of answers. The person with the huge production could have said, it's like, it's like, I don't know, I don't know why I'm going. I just, I just did this because that's what I wanted to do. Okay? So even though the artifact is technically better, it's still not, it's, that's not what the score is based on. And this could be any type of thing, it could be an essay, it could be really anything, because we want to make sure that it, you know, especially students with special needs, EL students, it's accessible to all of them, to all students. Now, the one thing, sorry, that I failed to mention at the beginning is, it's a big change from the last policy, is it used to be six quarters. So students in the beginning of 7th grade were already being judged to come to Lynn Tech, because we usually do it midway through the 8th grade. So that was moved down to four quarters. And there's also a caveat in here, that if you do not have four quarters, then that helps our students who are Els, who come in late, you know, maybe they come in, you know, the middle of 8th grade, it still provides them, does not exclude them, because if they don't have four quarters, we just extrapolate the information they have. So if they've been here a quarter, they've been here less than that, they've been here no time at all, we can still judge that score. So another big change we made is in the selection process. And this is a place where I think we can address, I know some of the issues that are very particular to Lynn. We went with a hybrid model. So we still feel it's valuable to have the scoring available, you know, so that students do put the effort and really show that they want to be, that they want to succeed at Lynn Tech. So every student is ranked by a composite score, and that's those numbers that you saw, add them together, they end up with a score, 0 to 100. The top 75% of that are offered admission based on that score. So which, if we continue with our 320 number, that is about 240. So the 240 students are admitted just based on that score. Now, this is where we change. The rest of the applicants, we do what's called the weighted lottery. So your score still matters, and if you're not familiar with the weighted lottery, what it means is, and I think we have the scale in there, if you're between 80 and 100, you get five chances in the lottery. If you're 60 to 80, you get four. And I don't have the exact numbers. All the way down to, you know, the last student on the list gets at least one chance in the lottery. So they all, everybody has an opportunity to be part of, to be successful and to actually get into Lynn Tech. So I kind of did this graph, and I did, we did simplify it. I know we had a problem with this. So the other thing we decided to do also is to address the number of students in Lynn that come in after our admissions season. Currently, we can't take them, unless they apply for 10th grade, unless they apply, you know, later on in the year. So we will have a deadline for our original applicants, but if you come into the district, we will continue to accept your application. So in February, which is the date when the district really needs most of our numbers, because English and Classical and us, we're all starting our scheduling process there, we're going to do two, you know, and these are approximate numbers, so 240, and then 10% on that lottery, which is about 32. So in our first application rounds, we're going to bring in about 272 students. Now, we say approximate, numbers could change, but let's say, you know, we're at 62 when we hit 240, and there are four students, we're not going to say, you know, we're not going to cut those students. We're going to finish taking the students with that number, so it might be 245, for instance. So that 10%, that 32 approximately, and we want to kind of bring it to, you know, that 272 number in February. We will hold applications at that point. We may have some attrition, we may have students who change their mind, it happens every year. But then in June, we want to bring in another 10%, another 32 students. So this would be students from the current lottery, students who are, who are new to the district, which many times includes many of our EL students, who, again, have been underrepresented, and it's one thing that we are trying to work with here. So at the end of June, and then a third one in August. Now, that says 16, 5%. But traditionally, what's happened is we have had attrition. So my approximate number for that is going to be anywhere from 30 to 40, because of the number of students who say they want to come, I mean, they're 8th graders, change their mind, parents move away, or whatever. So that, whatever that number is, up to 320. And that's, again, current numbers at Lynn Tech, expansion, those are a whole other things. So that's what our admission process. And the final thing, sorry, that talks about the attrition rate, just, so we did. So we understand that this is, this was done, you know, kind of in a hurry, but I believe it was done very thoughtful, very carefully, and with a lot of passion. This does not look anything like, I believe, what we thought we were going in it when we started with. But I believe this is something that's very good. But like any policy, I think the main problem our last policy had was, it sat dormant for 16 years. It wasn't touched for all that time. So it became obsolete for what we really need to do. So some things we're going to do with is, you know, we want to review the data. When we have this, every application process, we're going to review the data, look at the subgroup enrollment, is it doing what it needs to do? What are the trends in the lottery? Is the lottery allowing more ELs to come in? Are the new students to the district getting a chance to come in? So that's, you know, again, like, first, looking at the data after each admission cycle. We want to survey students. The main important thing of this is, we want this to be easy to access. We also want to make sure people understand the process. And I know we're kind of a bit, we have to use our new policy for this admission season, so we do need to get this information out very quickly. Do they understand what it means to get Lynn Tech? And this will include, you know, what we plan to do next year is start talking to 7th graders for a semester and say, hey, this is what you need to get into Lynn Tech, and start pushing that as we go, so that everybody knows the process. And then focus groups. We need to, you know, a lot of what's going on in the policy really deals with the perception. And, you know, we, I'd like to bring my pack in and program advisory councils, my general advisory council, just have them look at it. Bring in parents, bring in people from the community, bring in middle school, middle school people, and just have these focus groups to be able to make sure that our policy is what it says it is. And also, we want to make sure that our policy continues to align with our values. And that's the key. So, questions? Yes?
Yeah, so you want to let Dr. Tutwiler, it sounds like you want to comment?
Yeah, it's just one more piece of information, which is, what we're asking for is the committee's support for a pilot. I thought all of the slides were really important, but in particular, the last slide with the information around feedback. What Fred has presented, we think, is a closer alignment with values. We want to live it with students and families, and then we want to get feedback, look at the data, and see if it did what it was designed to do, and then determine whether or not shifts need to be made. But we're asking for your approval of a pilot. You know, we're having the conversation today, if the committee feels comfortable moving forward on Thursday, that's great. If not, you know, would recommend that the committee entertain a special meeting at some point before the winter holiday. I think this was sent to you in writing by me last week or the week before. But I just wanted to be clear about what the ask was.
Great, okay. Member Sandoval?
Thank you, Director Gallo, for coming to present this. With the uniqueness of our district of having a vocational technical school, I always thought that it should be open to more people. Obviously, this isn't going to address the cap, but it's going to address those that can be enrolled. My wife went to Lynn Tech, and she graduated from your nursing program. She's a nurse practitioner. She did the Skills USA, she was a part of the band, all that. So she got to enjoy that experience, and right now, we have an 8th grader at Pickering, and she's really pushing her to go to Tech, because she was able to experience work, school balance, and that was in the higher grades, and also go through the, what do you call it, for the 9th grade, is it a?
Exploratory.
Exploratory, yes. So there were just two things that came to mind for me, and maybe you can give me some clarification as to how you broke down, not just you, but the team broke down the scores. Because I like that it went from four quarters, six quarters to four quarters, gives the student enough time to really, like, shape up, if you really want to get into this, because this is what the scoring mechanisms are. But I always had a feeling that the reason why academics was so highly scored was because the students are expected to juggle, they have the one-week, you know, academics, one-week shop eventually. So that's why academics was important in the lower grades, is to show that the students had the capability to be able to handle such a big step forward. So was that discussed at all with the members?
Yes, it was. And yes, you know, we still think academics is important, we're going to be pushing, you know, the academics like we have, we're not planning to water down our academics or anything. But what we find is, if, some students don't do well academically, but do well vocationally. And that's where we're finding some of the disconnect of what's going on. You know, ideally, you know, if we had all students who get straight As, you know, school would be great, everything would be wonderful, but I think there's a lot of students who could benefit from the programs who aren't there, which is why we wanted to add that interest portion. Because we want students who want to come to Lynn Tech for that trade, for that, those vocational opportunities. And we're not restricting, you know, college, we're not restricting any of that, because we're still going to provide them the strong academics. It's just, you know, again, we actually decrease pretty much every score except by, to increase that interest score.
Every year, I feel as though Tech has the highest graduation rate in the city. So it sounds as though you guys are already leveraging the shop with the academics to let the student know, hey, if you want to continue to move forward, you need to shape up in this area, or in the other area. So my question was answered, and I know Dr. Tutwiler also wanted to chime in.
It's just a quick comment. I liked the switch from six quarters to four quarters, in part because of what Mr. Gallo discussed around how that sometimes excludes students who just get here and don't have those sort of records. But also, you know, I also like the flattening of the A to C piece, because, you know, a kid who's in 8th grade academically, developmentally, might be very different when he or she is a sophomore or a junior, in the right sort of context and environment. And so I think we're not making judgments about children, you know, when they're 14 that says, you know, hey, you didn't get all As, you're not going to be, you know, when you're a junior, a solid, I mean, that kid may, you know, because they're in the environment and doing the kinds of things that they're passionate about and feel connected to, may become an entirely different academic student over the course of time. So I like that piece also.
And one of the things that I've been saying the past four years that I've been on the committee is, middle school is a transitioning period. You know, it's a big deal, you know, you're going from elementary school to now this, you know, this middle place, and, you know, you're kind of trying to find yourself. I just have a feeling that what it looks like, or what it will look like when you do the grades A through C scored equally, is that each student is like getting a participation award, like, you know, when there's no first place or second place anymore, it's just, hey, here's your award for participating, even though you weren't first or second. And I know that that's not the mentality, and you've explained it, and Dr. Tutwiler's explained it as well. I just, that could be how it's perceived to the general public when we're now saying A through Cs are scored equally. But aside from that, the only other thing that I did want to bring up that I enjoyed quite much is, you have here, for the waitlist, that you're creating a unique ID for those students on the list, so it's, it really is a random selection, as opposed to, oh, this is Johnny's kid, we're going to put him up. So I like that we're adding that aspect of it to the admission process, and I think that that adds a layer of substance to the process as well, and makes it fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Member Gailey, then Member Ford.
I have a couple of questions. So I do like the four quarters for new measurement, and I like the way you're doing the measurement, and you're having them come in for an interview, and the interview with artifacts is the largest percentage. But what I'm having a hard time thinking about, and it's only because students in the past have told me, I tried to get into Tech, and I did all the right things, and I didn't get in, and other people did, that didn't do as well as I did, and I did all the right things. So that's why, like, if we total up all the 8th graders and the three middle schools, we have like 900 students trying to get into, what was it, 270 slots?
We had, last year, we had, well, we had 600 applicants last year. And I believe they entered 320. And the year before, we were pretty close to that as well.
So they're trying to get into 320, and with your new system of measurement, they're going to be doing far better, because a student that knows their expectations are going to do far better. The thing I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around is the waitlist and that, the lottery. Because like, it would be difficult for me to explain to a parent why their child's not getting in. And the other question I would like to ask you is, could we start the tours in the 7th grade, the end of 7th grade? Because that way there, they see the carrot. Because that way there, they see the carrot, they know what it is to get into tech, they perform throughout their four quarters in eighth grade to get into Lynn Tech, and you'll see a difference. But that's the only thing I'm having a little hard time wrapping my mind around, is the lottery thing. So, if you want to explain it a little bit clearer?
And that, and that's actually what much of our debate was over, was, do, do we go straight, straight merit, or do we include this lottery? And what percentage is, and, and all that came up. And, and that's, and that's where we came with, with the, the weighted lottery. So what we wanted is to make sure that every single eighth grade student that applied, they submitted a completed application, which, in order for an application to be complete, must have the artifact included, had an opportunity to come to Lynn Tech.
Okay.
So that's where that, that's where that extra twenty five, that twenty-five percent of students comes from. You know, so that, we, we wanted, so that no matter who you are, you have an opportunity to come. And that's, you know, that, that's where that, that real equity piece comes in, it's like, you know, you're a resident of Lynn, you deserve to come to Lynn Tech. But to be honest, your chance isn't as great if your score is low, because you only have one chance versus somebody at the top may have four or five chances to, to come in.
Well, with the new grading syst, well, the new acceptance system, I think that in this pilot, you're going to see that they're all going to succeed, because if they really want it, they're going to do what your expectations are.
And that, and that's where, being a pilot, we may come at, at the end and say, ooh, you know, maybe we shouldn't flatten the A through C that much. And, and I would be in front of the committee again, you know, probably in early September, just saying, you know what, we looked at our data and found this.
Yes, because I've seen the eighth graders going to, I've taken groups to tech, but I think if they're in the seventh grade going to tech, and I want to do that.
Well, we, I'm sorry, I, I didn't address that. So we definitely, one thing we, we must do as a school, is before the student starts their eligibility, which is really second semester, seventh grade, is to make sure they understand the policy. That could be either one of two ways, either we go to them or they come to us. Sometimes I'm coming, I know we bring them as, as eighth graders, because I, you know, it's part of, of what we need to do. And so I almost think bringing them as seventh graders also might be difficult. In the past, we've had road shows where we bring a group of students with projects, so the students can see, and we go into the cafeterias, we, we have assemblies with them, we have done that in the past. So we need to actively do that, so that students know what's required of them before they, before they start the process.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
All right, Member Ford, then Member Satterwhite.
Yeah, I just, Michael had commented basically about what I was going to say about the, the academic weighting. I think it's a, it's a great tool to do when to reduce the academic qualifications, in the sense that, you know, kids blossom, or students blossom at a different time, and you're, you're going to be taking a, someone that's not good as a book learner, but great as hands-on, and he's, he's going to, his, his passion is now going to be finally realized, he's going to be doing something that he's meant for, you know, that he's, that he's geared to it. I think it's a great thing, you know?
Yeah. And I, and the old, the old policy, which had the, you know, the separate grades, I worked well when we had three hundred and sixty students applying for, for the three hundred spots at that point. You know, at that point, you know, yes, having that differentiation, I think, worked, because there, there weren't a lot of students not getting in. But I think what's happened is, is we've increased the number of applicants. Now, we're, we're kind of taking this, this very specific segment of students, rather than getting really that broad representation of, of Lynn students. You know, it's, so, so I, I think that's, that's where, you know, that, one of the, one of our big conversations came over that, the fact that, you know, that, that student that's getting a few Cs isn't getting in. And we, we have demonstrated in the past that we've been very successful with those students, and have them be very successful, and going into trades, and getting these, these well-paying jobs straight out of high school. You know, so, so that's, so that, that's where this came in. You know, if we were still only getting three hundred and fifty applicants for our three hundred and twenty spots, I, I think the old policy would have worked fine. But, but because of that number, we, we don't want to just take a, 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 a specific segment of, of, you know, the eighth graders.
It's like the, like the sports recruiting, you gotta look for those hidden talents.
Yeah. Exactly.
Member Satterwhite?
And I believe, was it two years ago, we changed Lynn Tech to a junior, senior high? So my assumption is that this is for the high school admission policy, not for the discovery program?
Yes.
So we need to be specific in the, the language here, just so we understand? So I don't have an issue with the, with this being a pilot, but if we do, the only changes I would ask to be made is that underneath the Lynn Vocational Technical Institute, on the actual policy, it says high school admission policy? Just so we're on the same page that this is specific to high school and not junior high or the discovery program? And I don't think I saw anything else that jumped out, that would put us in a bind at a later time. And that obviously, that it be a pilot, what is the, are you asking for a two-year pilot, a one-year pilot, a three-year pilot?
We're, we're going to review at the end of every application season.
Okay.
And I, and that's even, you know, if, if things are great and things are, are still working, we, we want to still review it, because I think what we learned from this policy is, this policy probably should have been changed about four or five years ago.
A hundred percent.
When it stopped being as, as efficient, and, you know, at least while I'm there, that's, that's one of the, one of the things I want to do, is, is to continually review it, to make sure that it is meeting what we want to do. I will, it will be reviewed at the end of this admission season. If changes need to, again, if changes need to happen, if maybe we don't have enough information, we would go with, with the second year.
And that, that's one of the things that I'm, I'm happy that you're currently the director, because you have those years of working as VP at the school and working with these, these students. So you, you have the history, you have the knowledge of, of how these things can improve the, the student body in, in the process. You, you've been in the process for a long time, so.
A long time.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
And that's, and mostly, you know, I have a passion for the school, and I, I do want what's best for, for Lynn Tech and, and for the students of Lynn. I know some of you in the interview, and that's what I said, and I do mean it. And that's, and that's, and I'm very happy with this, with, with the result of this. But I understand that, that, you know, sometimes it looks good on paper, but then when you implement it, things don't quite go as planned, and, you know, at that point, we sit back down and say, well, guess what? You know, let's work on this. But I, but I, I believe this will work. I believe this will get, this will allow us to, to have those students who have that desire to be at Lynn Tech, who have that interest, and, and want to be there for the right reasons. You know, yeah, it's great that we're close to people's houses, it's great that, but that, but that's not who should come to Lynn Tech. We have limited spots for our vocational school in Lynn, and, and I would love to see the students who can benefit the most from it.
Thank you. I think, Member Capola had a question, and Dr. Tuttawala, do you want, did you want to chime in on this?
It's just a really quick point of clarification. We're going to ask, we're asking for a one-year pilot and committing to come back, you know, whenever it's appropriate. The last weighted lottery is in August, so probably, you know, one of the first meetings of the school year, or maybe early October, so we have some time to think about, make sense of it.
Probably October would be, would be good.
And present.
But just a quick response to that. How, how are you going to be able to measure that the group of students that got through the process are, are the students that are, are ready for the, for the, for the program? If we're so soon going to review it, even before we have the data of whether or not the students were successful in their first year?
Right, so.
It sounds like it's too soon.
Uh, I, understood, point well taken. I think what we're, I mean, one of, the, the biggest shift here is, is the who, right? And, and I think that's what we want to come back and report out on in that one year. That's not to say that there can't be additional, you know, research on, you know, okay, so this first group came in and persisted in the final, and in this kind of way over their time at Lynn Tech. I think that sort of, you know, research and study absolutely should be done, but I think as a benchmark, okay, we've had the experience, you know, what happens if, you know, certain aspects are cumbersome, or students report back that like, ah, I didn't know, like, you know, the interview, something didn't go right, or maybe the weighting wasn't quite right, and, you know, counselors are, are giving us that feedback. I wouldn't want to live that for another year without coming back and having the conversation, and then we can make a collaborative decision as to whether or not we move forward with it. If you want to do two years, I'm, I'm fine with it, but.
I just, because the objective, is it the success in the process or the success in the student? I think that's what I'm, I'm trying to understand better.
It, it's both.
Both, it's really both.
Member Capola?
Sorry.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
I didn't know if attorney Satterwhite was done.
Oh, did you have something else?
No, no, sorry, Donna.
Okay.
Um, I'm thrilled with it, because I, I know when we did the policy before, some of the reason was, you know, some of the other high schools used it as a dumping ground. And I'm not saying, you know, that was a majority, but, you know, that was something that they tried to do. So it was really important at that time that we came up with that policy. But you're right, it doesn't work any longer. So many, you know, our populations changed, you know, people are moving here from, you know, other places in the state, other countries, and they need that opportunity. So I'm thrilled with how you presented it. My one concern is, when we talk about the pilot, is, I know it's a DESI mandate here to make this change. Are they agreeable to a pilot, or are they looking for something a little more permanent that should be tweaked as we go along?
Hmm, that's a good question.
Did they say in, in, you know, anywhere in there, can it be a pilot?
I, I think with, with any of these policies, they, they can be changed whenever, as, as long as the school committee makes the change. So I, I don't think that it matters if we call it a pilot, as, as long as we are using it, the, I know their requirement is that we use it for this admission cycle. So we need, our current eighth graders need to go under our, our new policy. That's, that's the one, the one restriction that, that we do have.
Okay. As long as you don't get yourself in trouble, I have no problem.
It does have to be approved by the state, like, we have to submit it by the end of this month. The state then needs to review it and approve it.
Yeah.
Um, the state as a whole on this is looking at all technical schools and trying to mix up more of the enrollment and who has access to vocational education. So I think even at the state level, they, there is some flexibility there, that if things need to be tweaked, they're going to be open to that.
Yeah.
And then I just wanted to mention the academic piece, that A and C, A to C being level. I think we all need to think about students with disabilities, students who have a second language, students who lived trauma in their lives. I myself was a C student because of trauma and a disability. Doesn't mean that you can't be successful. And so this is leveling the playing field a little bit, that, you know, students who wouldn't necessarily have access to tech, because they weren't a straight A student and didn't get the score, now have a shot at getting in.
So, I, go, Member Gailey, yeah?
So the other thing is, anyone that doesn't get in still can take the night program, like, the night program there, or PM program?
The after dark.
The, the after dark program.
It was PM years ago, but.
Yeah, it's similar to the PM program.
So that's still open.
That's still active, and I, I imagine we're, we're going to hopefully be growing that.
Yeah.
You know, which I, that, that's, it, it's got a different purpose, because I think a lot of times what happens is, you know, once students get a little older, they realize, whoa, wait a minute, this is something I could benefit of, because they start those programs as juniors.
Juniors, so that's maturity.
Yeah, that's a completely different process.
Yep. And I agree with you, Ms. Regiera, about the C students, it's like, it is, different people have different things going on in their life.
Great, so I, I just real quickly wanted to thank you for the, for the presentation, to thank the, the committee that put this together. I know it's a, a lot of work. I think that, you know, there, there is a lot of attention being put on this statewide, and, you know, there are communities struggling with this issue. I think we can be really proud that we have this jewel in our district and can play this role in figuring out how to best use it, according to, to the, to the needs of the students of the city. You know, I think, for all my, my, the reasons my colleagues mentioned, this, this makes a lot of sense, and the reasons mentioned in your presentation, I also think that there's probably more than three hundred and twenty students that could thrive at Lynn Tech. And I think we should continue to try to make it a goal that, that any student in the city that we feel like could benefit from a Lynn Tech education and a vocational education can get it, and, and that's a, that's a lofty goal, but I know that one, a lot of, a lot of people would like us to continue to work towards. So I think, I think it's important that we, that we remember that as we figure out how to make these hard decisions as, about, about who can be the three twenty, that we continue to, to try to increase that number. Other, any other questions?
Motion.
Member Ford?
I make a motion to accept the Lynn Vocational Technical Institute admission policies, with the only caveat, we changed it to high school admissions policy.
Second.
Motion made and seconded as a pilot, Member Ford?
Yes, as a pilot.
Motion made and seconded, roll call, please.
For Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Satterwhite?
Yes. Oh, and to move it to the full committee.
And to move it to the full committee, great. No further business.
Listen to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.